All right. Good evening. I would like to call the August 24, 2021 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I do not have any announcements this evening. Is there anyone here for anything not currently listed on our agenda? Seeing is none. We can go right into the first agenda item. Was it the Blackstone River Valley Greenway Challenge Race on 9/25 and possible votes? So, in the Blackstone River Valley Greenway Challenge, sponsored by Unibank and the Whitten Community Center, is requesting permission to pass through Douglas to hold some of its activities at Wollam Lake. This will take place on September 25, 2021, with a rain date of the 2nd. And we have the route and everything in our packet. Is there anybody here to speak on this? Come on up.
Please do. Yep, absolutely. I should get it for you, but if you're here on behalf of the Greenway Challenge, you can move your own chair, I suppose.
Oh, I wish I could say I could run that, but I can't. So, that would be impromptu. I run a community center, but I don't actually work out. So, yes, we're running the Greenway Challenge. It's our 20th year. We've done this many times through Douglas, and usually we reverse routes in the last several years. So, this year, it's running upstream, as we call it, from Rhode Island, and it will end at the Whiten Community Center. So, it starts in Lincoln Woods. And so Douglas would be our second stop after Lincoln Woods. So, we'll start there. They'll travel here by bike. They'll go through a mountain bike trail ride in Wollam Lake, and then leave by bike to Riverbend Farm.
Nice. You gonna sign up, Tim?
No.
I applaud everybody that participates.
Oh, they're amazing. I mean, there are people that do it all by themselves. So, there's eight segments, you know, 50-something miles that they do all by themselves. And then there are teams that do it in conjunction with, like, you know, from five, you know, can be as many, as little as two people, all the way up to eight people. So, yeah, it's pretty impressive, especially the iron men and women that do it all by themselves.
Well, you, Mike, you wanna jump in on that?
On a Peloton. I'll get it from Celine. I just took notice that their rain date was October 2nd, which is the same as the Oktoberfest.
Yes.
But their route turns at the fire station and goes down through Manchuk, so it won't interfere.
I have to check that with them.
Oh, okay. Yep, yep. Well, I seen the rain date, I'm like, oh, wait a minute.
Well, actually, we'll be at Oktoberfest, so hopefully we'll not have to use the rain date.
You can stop beer on the way.
Yeah. We usually are there down on Main Street. So, no, the only way we ever, I don't know if we've ever actually used it, but we considered it one year when there was a hurricane, you know, but it really takes that level of disruption for us to move the Greenway Challenge.
Well, if it's anything like the hurricane that just came through, I don't even think it would be a disruption.
No, no. The rain from the tornado warning was worse than that, so.
It might make sense, Lisa, just to reach out to the chief and let him know that the rain date is that day, and that may be.
And Charlie Thompson, who runs this race for us, former director of the community center, he usually speaks to the police department directly just to review the route and where the officers are placed, and I'm sure they'll have that conversation as well.
Twenty years, you guys remember?
Twentieth. Big year. It was supposed to be the 20th in 2020, but, you know, as many things, COVID disrupted that.
Well, I worked for eye doctors, and 2020 was supposed to be the year of the eye exam?
Yeah. That didn't go planned either, right? Yes.
So, was this the first year, though, that you're actually doing the mountain bike part?
No.
You've done that before?
We've done that before as well, yes.
The state's aware of everything, and you're good there.
Yes, we always, we always speak with the park people, too, Mr. Vandennacker. And we have a mountain bike club that sets the route and everything, so it's done properly.
Having no other questions, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we.
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
How about coordinating with our fire and ambulance department? Has there been any reach out?
I'm not aware of it, but we can do that, for sure.
We had a race a couple weeks ago.
Yeah.
Very accomplished people.
Mm-hmm.
And one of the better riders was way ahead, you know, moving really quickly, took a tumble, you know, head over handlebars, and was very seriously injured. That ties up a resource, and we weren't pre-staged.
Okay.
So, if you could.
That makes sense, yes.
Have your people talk to Chief Vincent and the EMS coordinator, Lieutenant Worcester.
Okay.
So, they can determine with how they want to staff that that day.
Okay. Absolutely.
Set up ahead of time.
Absolutely. We can absolutely do that.
Now.
Thank you.
That would be great.
That's good.
Second to motion.
All right. So, you have a motion that's been made and seconded.
Thank you, Hal.
He's just hanging out.
He's gonna burst from a peep, that's all.
Little sugar rush.
Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
You're the best.
Thank you.
All right. So, do we have anybody from Matchaline on?
Not right, not yet. Let me check my phone, too. Lisa, do you have your outlook?
You getting nervous on that?
No, I'm not, at all.
No emails from them. I was in contact with them yesterday and gave them the link, though.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see any communication from this outfit. The order control plan, I believe, is a condition of the host community agreement that they need to satisfy before they can move on.
Okay.
Not only is it in the agreement with the town zoning code, environmental standards make it a violation to create offensive orders, basically creating a public nuisance. So, there's more than one way to regulate this. So, the fact that they've come forward and offered an order control plan, I don't know that anybody's really qualified to opine at the moment on the validity of it or the rigor of it.
Well, we, why would we need to take any action? They could do the plan, and if there's no problem, there's no problem. If somebody complains, then we'll look at their plan and see if it's.
So, their plan's on file with us. We have a record of it, so we can just move past it and go on to the next thing.
Yeah, and you have a complete section on order.
You want to take a neutral vote, you can say we are, you see.
Yeah. We've accepted your plan. So moved, do we accept the plan submitted to the board?
I'll second that.
Okay. So, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next is the CM, RPC, Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator Delegate, and alternate appointments for FY '22 and possible votes, which this is a appointment that is near and dear to Tim's heart.
So, in the interest of moving things along, Mr. Chairman, I will, I will serve in this capacity forwarding as many emails as possible to the appropriate people and not promising a thing to the townspeople in regards to my involvement at annual meetings and the like.
That works.
I move that we accept him, gracious acceptance of serving for another term.
So, and motion's been made. Anybody want to second it?
Oh, I'll second that hot felt.
With enthusiasm.
Enthusiasm.
I would like to commend Mr. Bonham on his email forwarding skills. They are.
I'd like to second that.
Let's just have the vote already.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
For graciously stepping up and doing that. Okay. Next is to review and sign the warrant for special town election and possible votes, which we do have a copy of that in our packet. So, and it's just basically the election scheduled for Tuesday, the 28th day of September 2021, voting from 8 to 8, and it is for the vacant selectman seat for a term of three years.
I'll make a motion that we sign the warrant for a special town election on the date of the 28th day of September.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is to open the special town meeting warrant for November 8, 2021, and discuss timeline and possible votes.
Do we have one?
I'm looking. I don't see it.
I don't see it in there either.
We don't have a copy of that. So, do we need to do that tonight to meet any timelines, Matt?
I thought the objective here was to open the warrant, and then the timeline would be backed out from the date. The date, the target date is November 8.
That's a Monday.
Yeah. It's always a Monday.
Okay.
Unless it's the 11th, and then we have to fish around for a better date.
But.
So, what has to happen here, Lisa, is that in coordination with Chris, then you back out the period of time when the board must post the warrant.
Okay.
And then from there, work out with FinCom what their schedule's gonna be. So, they want to have their flyer ready and hidden people's mailboxes right before the meeting. That's always been the way it's been done.
Okay.
Unless FinCom asks for us to do it differently, that's the way we'll keep doing it. So, it really kind of has to be all posted and ready to go Thursday, or to drop, to be in people's mailbox by Thursday, which means you drop it the Tuesday before, and you just keep backing up to the point where we know when we have to close the warrant, we can't put anything else on.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, we've been building this warrant for a while. We've got a lot of intra-fund transfers, so I don't think we're gonna be raising and appropriating new funds for much by way of operations. In other words, we may have to move money from compensation accounts over to expense accounts to pay for certain consultants that take the place of somebody during a vacancy, for instance, in an office.
It's mostly housekeeping.
It's mostly housekeeping stuff in the budget. Capital will have an item that they are gonna consider, and that is the timing and extent of funding around repairs to the electrical system at the fire station after the electric strike. There's an extensive report, I think I circulated that report to the select board. I haven't sent it to Capitol yet.
No, you didn't send it to Capitol.
But you guys should have it. The electrical engineer's name is Murphy, and he was hired and paid to do a survey of the condition of the electrical system at the fire department, and has really significant conclusions as to deficiencies in the building and the electrical system. And after our last conference call, he was going to refine his estimate of cost to address the whole thing. And I wanted him to do that because his contingencies in his original estimate were so large that it made the whole project look like a really large expenditure. It may still be a really large expenditure, but I wanted him to whittle down the uncertainty so his contingencies wouldn't have to be so large. He had about a 40% contingency, 20% for design and the other for construction. I think we can, we can get a better estimate than that. So, just looking at his lower bound and upper bound numbers right now, somewhere between 270,000, 280,000, and over 500,000 to address the ongoing issues at the fire station. Principally, it boils down to the lightning strike forced us to review the whole system because there was repairs that needed to be done, and, yeah, have to go through and determine what was grounded, what was not grounded, what failed, where the shorts are. And it was in the course of doing that survey that the electrical engineer said two very important things. One is, you got about 400 amps of single-phase service into a building that was designed for a call fire department. It wasn't really gonna be occupied much more than during the day when your chief was there. Now you have a full-time, 24/7, 365-day fire department, fire and ambulance department, charging all kinds of equipment, plugging in the trucks, utilizing all of the building systems, trying to keep the air, you know, at a reasonable temperature, because when you're there 24/7, you are gonna try to sleep in between calls. And the total demand on electricity is closer to 800 amps of three-phase service. So, it's a very significant upgrade, if you're familiar with this type of thing. We're served from a pole right now. Now we need a transformer on a pad outside the building to bring the power in. It also pointed out the inadequacy of a generator. So, the generator's 30KW, which is a commercial-sized, but probably one of the smallest commercial-sized generators you can get, and doesn't really have anywhere near enough power generation ability to handle the needs of the building at all. There are aspects of the fire department's, the fire station's, use of power that are a little bit different. You have very large bay doors that have automatic door openers. When they turn on, they jolt the system. You know, they have a big immediate need for electricity to start the motor and to start to crank the doors up. We got many bays in that building, so if you have to scramble multiple pieces of equipment, they all have to be able to open the door unless you're willing to sustain the delay of somebody cranking it up by hand.
Yeah, and they don't operate under the current generator.
They don't operate under the.
If a generator service, the doors won't open, they gotta manually open them all.
So, there are some things that we need to do there. So, that's gonna be certainly a topic of conversation with Capitol. The other thing that's gonna be on the warrant, for sure, is the cost overage of the fuel spill in the basement of municipal center. We have an uninsured portion of that cost, which at the moment is a little over $100,000. And knock on wood, we're hoping it stays there. We've had a couple of clean tests in a row, which are very encouraging, so we might be able to stop the bleeding, but our coverage stopped at 500,000. The cleanup's well over 600 at this point. Those items, for sure, will be on this warrant. And then we have other placeholders, Lisa, that we, we have some proposed zoning changes that have been going back and forth, planning department.
So.
You need a vote to open if we don't.
You can open it. It's not gonna hurt anybody, because it's open, right?
Well, I'm just wondering, November 8 is a Monday. The town moderator has been hesitant.
I've already checked with Keith and Chris, and they both said yes right away to November 8.
All right.
Yeah.
Good.
So, we don't really need to do anything, or?
We just need to open the warrant.
Yep. I'll move that we open the warrant for the special town meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. The next is to review and update the code of conduct for boards, commissions, and committees and possible votes. And we have our code of conduct for boards, commissions, and committees in our packet. Want me to run down through each one that's listed? Think that would make sense?
Yeah, I think for the purposes of a solid review, we should probably consider each number and decide whether we like it or not, or want to change it.
Sure. All right. So, all members of board, commissions, and committees are expected to conduct themselves as follows. Number one, realize that his/her function is to follow the process and the mission of the board, commission, or committee as defined in state and federal laws, local bylaws, and town policies. That one seems good. Like that one? Anybody else? We all like number one? Realize that he or she is one of a team and should abide by all decisions of the board, commission, or committee once they have been made.
That's a little more ambiguous, because that means somebody can't speak against a decision if they disagreed with it?
I think that you, it's kind of a rough.
I think abide is a funny word.
Wait, you can speak against it until the decision is made, and then you.
Once the decision's been made, that's the position of the board. You can say.
But you could say you disagree with it. I don't, you know, I, if somebody was running for selectman and you didn't like some decision that the board had made, and you.
I redid that.
You did it.
Yeah, I think we could clean up some of the wording on item two.
So, I looked up the definition of abide. Accept or act in accordance with a rule, a decision, or a recommendation. So, to me, it certainly can be cleaned up. I'm not gonna get in the way of that. I think the important piece to it there was that he or she is one of a team. Yeah, that's probably why we put that in a long time ago. Should accept the decisions of the board. In other words, we really don't want people belaboring a vote two, four weeks after, right? That's, I think, where we were trying to shoot for, but.
Right. Once the decision is made, it's just accepted.
Yeah, move on.
You have your opportunity to discuss it before the vote, and then afterwards it's done.
All right. Go on to three. Yeah, number three, be well-informed concerning the duties and responsibilities of the board, commission, or committee.
Apple pie and motherhood. That's a good one. No problem with that one.
Yeah, I like number three. That makes sense. I like number four, too. Remember that he or she represents the entire community at all times.
Can I just maybe insert, because I think a key piece to this, or one of the reasons why I wanted to talk about it, was the social media presence that many of our board members have?
Yes.
And I'm thinking of one moment in particular, although there's been a few, where the social media posts are outrageous or profane, the one I'm thinking of, and, you know, directly. And I'm looking at you now because it was you, Kevin, but I think you know the situation.
I do.
I do think we probably need to include some language, whether it be in item four or maybe down a little bit, that public statements and public forums in some way are a reflection of that person's role within the town government.
I agree with you. I mean, especially if, and I, I know the situation that you're discussing now, if a social media page has been created or is administered and is basically naming off whatever board or commission that you're sitting on, then, yeah, you definitely have some code of conduct that would sit behind that. It's one of those tricky ones, though, because people do have the right, you know, if you're saying, this is my opinion as an individual with no reflection on the town in any way, shape, or form, you know, it's John Q. Public laying in. It's a gray area.
To be blunt, I think that is so lame. Look, you have a right to say whatever you want. Nobody can take that away from you. You do not have a right to sit on a board. You don't have a God-given right to sit on a board. If you've been appointed, and you want to go off and attack everybody and everything, and use all kinds of horrible language and cast aspersions or slander people, you should be removed from the board. You can say what you want. Nobody's gonna prosecute you for exercising your right to free speech. It's just that you don't get to sit there and do whatever the heck you want and pretend that you're not under the color of the board that you sit on. In a small town, people know who's on the zoning board, they know who's on the planning board, they know who's on the board of selection. And saying, well, I'm going to change my hat now and be a member of the public, it's like, come on, this is, I don't know, I think it's a real shell game, and it has almost no merit at all. I don't know. My professional organization frowns upon, if I were to stand up and speak at my town meeting, it would be frowned upon, because you're one click away from knowing that I'm a town administrator in another town. And so, it's just not appropriate, because whether you're only using your knowledge of a situation without referring to who you are, people can still find out, well, you are in a position where you would know what's going on and issues like this, and they will get attached more or less credibility to your opinion based upon.
Your career.
Who you are, what you're appointed to. So, I don't know. I just.
Well, we should put a social media clause in it.
We all have a social media policy. I wouldn't bind a board or committee member to anything more strict than we bind employees to.
Right.
So, we just, can we just take whatever's in the town policy and add that on?
You probably should review that and update it, too.
Yeah.
Because no matter when it was drafted, it's already on a date. I don't care. We didn't do it last year or the year before.
The whole thing with, with this here, all these things that are on here, if you don't enforce them, they're not worth the paper they're written on.
That's true.
Yeah.
It's up to the committee where the person's on to try to enforce it or do something about it, I think, right?
None, I don't think so. I think, I think it all depends on what the situation is, because I don't know what is being referred to. This is just general conversation. It would come down to the appointing authority.
Unless it's an elected position.
Unless it's an elected position, and then that's, and that would become, I think they're doing it in Florida now, they got 70,000 votes for DeSantos or whatever it is. So, you would have that recourse or an ethics violation, but you want to, there's no other recourse on an elected official, I don't think.
I don't think you can apply this to anything else other than the people you appoint.
Correct.
As the appointing authority.
Makes sense.
As the Board of Selectmen. If it's a, an appointment by the moderator, then the moderator would, if these are adopted by the town, then the moderator should be enforcing his, these policies as well.
Yeah, I mean, the first step in it should be, obviously, the chairman of whatever committee it happens to be, should be the first one to be stepping up and saying, you know, this is our code of conduct, you're in violation of it, knock it off.
Mm-hmm.
And if it turns into be a repeat thing, and the chairman's not doing something, then it should bubble up to us. Does that make sense?
It's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna bubble up to you really fast if there is no support to the chairman of whatever particular committee or board that you're talking about. And the support has to come from the appointing authority, whoever that may be.
I think we should also make sure that when we make these appointments, a copy of the code of conduct goes out with our appointment.
I think that does, and that happens anyways.
Does it?
I'm not sure.
I don't think so.
You could ask the.
Well, I think, when you get sworn in, I think Chris gives you, gives you a copy of that.
Implement it from next.
Yeah.
For the, right, it's just part of the process.
But you've struck on an issue that's not covered by the current code for, Mr. Chairman, if we can have a free-form conversation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that you don't, I don't think there's a single bylaw where you pick a chair.
Right.
I think all the boards pick their own chairs. But chairs do need to be held to a higher standard. As a presiding officer, if you see a meeting that's going off the rails for any reason, you have an obligation to stop it. And failing to do so should be a violation of the code of conduct, because, oh, I didn't say anything, but I let those other six people just hammer away, and never used the gavel, and never took responsibility for the conduct of the meeting is just as bad behavior as being the person who's on the attack.
But we could add that as.
Yeah, I think we should add that. Anybody disagree with that side of it?
We can draft something.
Basically. Basically, the chair shall be responsible for the conduct of people.
And the decorum of a meeting.
Yeah, decorum.
Then, to our volunteers out there, this board in no way, shape, or form is perfect. So, this is as much for us as it is for anyone else. So, I think, I had mentioned the social media piece, and I'm feeling like, I don't know if Matt was against the idea or for it, but I would like to see in black and white a little bit, just so if that situation that I'm thinking of happens again, I suppose I probably could have taken this document and said that was enough.
Yeah.
So, maybe it doesn't need to be specifically in there.
I think you should put specifics on my recommendation. Because we have a social media policy, if we had an employee who posted that same post in their context of their employment...
Yeah.
They would be, they would definitely be disciplined. I don't know if that, it would depend on how far you go, whether it would be a terminable offense or not, but there would certainly be discipline.
Well, I think when you put on it, it would be up to and including removal.
All right. So, I'm good with that. That's nice.
Because that's, AIA has the same thing, and our social media policy is, is it's up to and including...
It's Potter Stewart. I don't, I can't define it, but I know when I see it.
Yeah.
Remember that, Al?
Like pornography.
Yeah.
I was not going to go there.
It's his famous quote.
Oh, yeah.
Very quotable justice, Potter Stewart.
Was that Potter Stewart?
Yes, it was.
So, do we have six now? So, we know that we're going to add a social media policy. We're going to add verbiage around the chairman.
Yep.
Number six is abide by the ethics, open meeting, and public record laws established by the state.
Easy.
Yeah.
Fine.
Not make statements or promises of how he/she will vote on matters that will come before the board, commission, or committee until he/she has had an opportunity to hear all sides of the issue during a public meeting of the board, commission, or committee. That makes sense. Make decisions only after all the facts have been presented and discussed. Treat with respect all members of the board, commission, committee, and the public despite differences of opinion. Never publicly criticize an employee of the town. Certain boards, commissions, and committees have the responsibility of reviewing and/or critiquing supervisory personnel as part of their regular duties. The exercise of those duties shall not be limited by this section. Concerns about staff performance should be made to the executive administrator through private conversation, or similarly to the superintendent of schools or school department If circumstances change so that meeting attendance on a regular basis becomes difficult, the board, commission, or committee member will offer his or her resignation to the appointing authority. A member with three consecutive unexplained absences will be expected to resign. And then, this is for the library board of trustees.
I think that was it.
Oh, that was it. Yeah. Sorry, didn't have a page break in there. My bad.
So, on number 11, it says, "Expected to resign."
I think we should change that, because we have an attendance policy now.
I think you have a bylaw.
Yeah, we do. So, probably change the verbiage, please refer to attendance bylaw, which does rate its three consecutive accident, unexplained...
It's unexcused.
Unexcused.
It's consistent terms.
I think that is the bylaw.
I know exactly where my bylaw is. All right, she'll go get it.
All right.
And I think it's four in the bylaw.
I think it is.
Four unexcused absences. You are to resign, not expected.
Is that over the course of your entire year?
You're considered resigned. No, no, four unex, four consecutive unexcused absences, you're considered resigned.
Oh, okay. So, it's four.
I believe that's what he's going to say when he comes back.
I trust you.
I could be wrong. I've been before. But none of these policies do any good if there's no enforcement, and it's just a waste of breath.
And I think that would go under the, where we have a section that's going to be written out for chairman. That would be one of the expectations of, you know, that you enforce the, you know, the code of conduct as presented.
It's good to be discussing this, because I frankly had forgotten that, from time to time, that we do have this. So, yeah, enforcement might be here when it's on radar.
We also have policies and procedures on the website, too.
It might take me a second or two to find it.
But the core outline of it's solid, and it works. It's just we've got to do a couple of tweaks, considering times have changed a bit.
Number seven, while it captures the thought, technically is often referred to as ex parte communications, communication from a voting member of a body before the body has met to consider the matter. The violation is of the due process rights of whoever's appearing before the board. It's a lot more, it's a pretty significant due process violation. And in other jurisdictions, zoning boards in particular, which sit as quasi-judicial bodies, offering relief from existing... If two people are members of the board communicate, even though they're not violating the open meetings law, they are making ex parte communications to an applicant. So, if the two people or three people talk to the applicant about that application, it's thrown out. Just de facto, the decision is thrown out. Sometimes the court will remove those members from being able to consider the matter any further, but that was an issue that blew up in a really big way in one socket when I was a department head there. Zoning board members took the meeting out to the parking lot and began to discuss the merits of it. Now, the applicant was standing three cars away, and they didn't realize it. "I ain't voting for that bleepin' thing, blah, blah, blah," right? And the public hearing wasn't even closed yet, and there were other parties in interest around the conversation, and the whole thing was thrown out by the court. They had to start over. People were fined. It was a really big problem. Massachusetts doesn't seem to be having, take that quite as seriously. I haven't heard that phrase in the four years I've worked here, ex parte communication. But that's what the crux of what this is, is that it's not just an open meetings issue. You're violating the rights of whoever's applying, or whoever's opposed to the application. If it's going to a public hearing before a decision-making body, you're not, you really shouldn't talk about it before it comes in. Now, you can say whatever you want to in a public hearing for the record, but that's why seven is kind of a really important one. I never am able to find things when I'm in a hurry to find them.
It's not super pressing. I think the biggest thing, whereas it pertains to attendance, it needs to reference the bylaw.
Here we go. Section four, because the reason why I can't find it is it's usually right in front of me, and I'm overlooking it. A member with four consecutive, this is a pretty high burden. Four consecutive unexcused meeting absences during any fiscal year shall be deemed to have resigned. Written notice will be given by the board chair to the former member, with copies to the town clerk, the board of selectmen, and any other, you know, if there's another appointing authority. It's not optional.
No, if you had four consecutive ones.
But your policy goes beyond that. Your policy says, if you have difficulties attending, so even if you don't trigger four consecutive, let's say it's six absences over the course of nine meetings...
Absences, isn't there something else in there about three within a calendar year?
In the bylaw?
Maybe it's not under that section, then.
I don't see anything about three.
So, it must have been just the four consecutive ones.
So, we would want our policy to reflect that, like in the code of conduct.
Right, because in the number 11, it says, "Unexplained and expected," and those two things should be changed. Unexcused and you're gone.
Well, who excuses them? The chairman or the...
You're supposed to announce it at every meeting, and as a member, you're supposed to notify the chairman immediately preceding the meeting, like you did the other, last week, that you're not going to be able to attend. That's the proper way to do it. Well, that's what's, that's what you're supposed to do.
Thank you.
Your section, section four, subsection 2.4.2, there's no inquiry into the merit behind the absence. It's whether or not the board was provided with notice. So, if you tell the chair, "I'm not coming next Tuesday,"
Right.
That's an excused absence. The chair's only obligation, the chairperson is not required to do anything other than to report to the board at its meeting whether a prior notice of absence was or was not given by the absentee.
Yep. Which would be...
So, if you give a notice of absence, does that mean you're automatically okay?
Yeah.
Which seems sort of silly, because you could say, "I'm tied up tonight. I can't come."
You don't even have to say it. You just say, "I'm not coming." That's all you need to say.
Well, it's sort of like a toothless thing at that.
Well, you're giving notice to the board that you're not going to be able to make a quorum, so that's...
Well, that's important. True.
That's the point of it.
And I mean, at some point in time, it's, again, you kind of go back to the code of conduct under a chairman. If you've got somebody that, like, we have 12 meetings, this person's called on a 10 out of 12, "I'm sorry, I'm not going to make it." Yes, it's an excused absence, but you're kind of negating the purpose of holding that chair.
But you're capturing it with section 11 of your code of conduct. If circumstances change so that meeting attendance on a regular basis becomes difficult, so you may have a best reason in the world for not going, but if you simply, what that means is if you can't serve, then you should stop trying.
Correct.
Yeah, that's fair.
Right?
And we have that situation.
But there's no obligation.
Situation going on now in a couple of different boards.
So, again, it's more advisory than it, it doesn't have any teeth to force you out.
Right.
I had thought that was, that was the way it was going to operate.
The code is basically, the code of conduct asks you to resign, but you don't have to, as long as you don't trigger this unexcused absence provision in the bylaw.
Yeah, the way this is written is, "I don't want to show up, and I'm not resigning." So, that work for you? I just let you know that I'm not going to come next week.
For the next 10 meetings, I get things doing, doing that.
There has to be a way.
Well, you have to do it immediately prior each meeting, so you can't group them.
But the thing is, in a logical way, what makes logical sense, you can, but right now, you can't, because you don't have any words anywhere that say it.
So, we need to reflect that.
So, as the appointing authority, I mean, if you had a, think about how badly this could break down, if you had a zoning board with only five members on it, and four of them just consistently said, "I'm not coming to the next meeting," you know, it's picnic day.
All you need is two, because you require four votes.
Right.
You just need two people that don't show up.
So, at that point, you have a board that can't function.
Right.
So, you're either giving constructive approvals to people who file applications timely, or you're violating their due process rights, because they can't get the relief they've asked for. So, at that point, you would be forced to take action. So, you should, there should be something in writing that allows you to have firm footing to do that. Zoning's a bad example, because there's actually a provision in the state statute. Zoning board members may be brought up on charges and removed by the appointing authority. But your other boards that you...
And if the zoning board couldn't meet, then the selectman would take over that role, correct?
Well, I think that's correct, but legal counsel has been loathe to offer that. Remember, this conversation occurred with CONCON. CONCON being a very strange creature of the law, as long as there's at least one, you know?
By party.
It's in the Bible. Jesus said, "As long as there's three people get together, you can have a church." But in the conservation commission land, you only need one person. But as long as there's somebody to implement the statutory scheme, you have a CONCON. So, you might start off with nine, but that doesn't mean you have to have five. If you have nine, you have to have five to have a quorum, but if you only have five, it's fine, if only three show up. So, that's, that's a strange creature of the law, but you have plenty of boards and committees where these rules don't apply. There's no statute.
So, could you help draft something up that would give that some teeth?
Other than that, I can't think of anything. Anyone else?
To be honest, I hate the phraseology in number 10, because it leaves it a little too wide open. Again, it's just an opinion, so you can take it for what it's worth, but...
But if you have some alternative language, let's look at it.
So, the town administrator's evaluation must be done in public. So, the board of selectmen must be able to do that. I think it might be the same for the superintendent of schools and the school committee. I think his evaluation has to be done in public. But that should be the only place. There really isn't any other board right now that has reviewing authority over your two most senior administrative officers of the town. So, it would be inappropriate, for example, for a capital committee, if you pull a strange example, to have a meeting where they ambush the superintendent and butcher him over his capital priorities. And, you know, you can go to the merits, but you wouldn't be, it wouldn't be appropriate to frame it in the context of performance or criticizing the individual. You would, the proper way to have the dialogue would be, "You need to work closer with the school committee to come up with a stronger plan, blah, 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 blah." But I think what 10 was established to do was, first of all, you wouldn't have people being criticized in absentia, so that's the worst thing, right? They're not able to defend themselves, and the board gets together and decides they're going to roast the building commissioner, or the CONCON agent, or whoever, they have a bone to pick with. That's obviously not allowed.
Well, that's what they're going to do next week.
But there's a mechanism for that. That mechanism is to bring the complaint to whoever supervises that person. It's either going to be me or the superintendent, or in one rare, the library board trustees and the water commission may have direct authority over their employees. But you bring performance issues to whoever it is that evaluates or manages that subordinate within the organization. What makes me not entirely, so I think that instead of having this vague thing, oh, there's a whole bunch of boards that review, nah, not really.
Well, that whole section in parentheses, what's that, put in there because they're, this was when there was the actual personnel board, instead of having you in that role? Is that what this could have been referring to? Should that just strike out, that whole section in parentheses?
That's a good thought. That's probably one reason why it was there.
Yeah. Just strike out the whole section in parentheses, because as soon as you get past that, it addresses what you just talked about, that if you have any issues, you have to go to the town administrator or the superintendent if it's some, something to do with the school department.
And I agree with that. Again, just more opinion, Mr. Chairman, is that, I'll tell you one thing that is not comfortable at all. The policy decisions of the town, the priorities of its budget, the allocation of resources, is a decision either of town meeting or of the board of selectmen. It is completely inappropriate for any board or commission that may disagree with you to take it out on a member of the administration, whether it's the finance director, the town administrator, the town engineer, anybody. If you voted, and you did, five to zero to freeze capital spending for the entire period of the pandemic, because the recommendation of the town administrator and the finance director jointly was that we didn't know where the resources would come from if we were shorted on our state aid, and we might have to go back to town meeting to reapply those funds to something else. It's ridiculous to have a board or committee meet a year later and say, "Well, why weren't all these projects done?" Well, they weren't done because they were frozen by the board of selectmen. If you have an issue with that, take it to the board of selectmen. Don't proceed to take the next 30 or 40 minutes. Don't proceed to take the next 30 or 40 minutes of time in front of a camera to attempt to humiliate someone or to put them on the spot. It's not my responsibility or anybody else's responsibility to undermine the policies of the board that appoint me with the benefit of hindsight. So that's something that really shouldn't happen. I'll tell you what happens. If that behavior persists over a period of time, your civic life as a community will completely unravel. Been there, done that, got the T-shirt, I'm never doing it again. I'm never going to be a part of a community again. In my role, I would never ask anybody on my staff to be part of this, what turns into a five-ring circus where every single board or commission meeting turns into open season on whoever's sitting in front of them to be political pawns in a game between people who sit on different boards or who have different political affiliations or what have you. Our job as members of the administration or as part of the staff when we come to a board is to present people with facts that help them make decisions, the decisions that their board is charged to make. So if your board is supposed to open bids and read bids, is no place on your agenda to attack the board of selectmen's policies. It's not an appropriate topic of conversation. Same thing with CONCOM. The applications are for notice of intent or any other form of relief that's necessary to work within the area of jurisdiction. You would be incensed if the CONCOM chair decided, well, we're going to put it on the agenda, we're going to just, we're going to have the CONCOM agent here, we're going to grill him about his budget and use the CONCOM agent as a way to attack the town administrator and attack the board of selectmen for taking all the money out of our wetlands fund, right? You wouldn't abide by that. So that shouldn't be something that you tolerate from the people you appoint.
No, it's inappropriate behavior. If there's a problem with the policy or any marching orders, in essence, that this board has given to you to follow through, as is the town administrator, if people have a problem with that, you know, our meetings are public, come in, sit down and tell us. But I don't think, I personally-
It doesn't have to be that, it could be correspondence, it could be a reach out. It could be anything.
I don't think it's-
As individual members, though, what they can't do is sit in a meeting to decide to have that conversation.
No. No, I think behavior like that is one of those things that needs to be in a pretty clear in our code of conduct. If that's your modus operandi, then, you know, A, immediate removal needs to happen because that's just grossly inappropriate. And B, you know, don't consider being reappointed for anything.
Was that a hypothetical matter? Should I watch a meeting or two?
Well, I just, it's just a plea, right? You are the appointing authority. You appoint the town administrator, you ratify the employment arrangements of all department heads, and you appoint most of the board and committee members on boards that have authority. You're the glue, you hold it together. So if there's any kind of dysfunction in the meeting, there, it's one thing to say, well, we'll just work it out because we have differences of opinion. If it's over the facts of the matter that's in front of them, that's democracy, that's how it's supposed to work. But when it turns into a free-for-all where people are just criticizing what you've done, well, you're not there. So it goes nowhere. There's absolutely no good thing comes out of that conversation. It just embarrasses everyone that's involved.
Make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Your point earlier, I know exactly what Matt's talking about, obviously. Your point earlier that the chairman of the boards and committees should be, Matt made the point, held at a higher expectation, higher level.
Correct.
Directions should be given to all these boards. Chairman has to control that meeting and that would be, if there's a member that's out of line or going somewhere they shouldn't be, then it's up to that chairman to reel that person back in. If that chairman chooses not to do that, then the board of selectmen probably should or the appointing authority have a conversation with that particular chairman to start enforcing the code of conduct. But again, if there's no enforcement in this, this is all wasted conversation. That's all it is.
Oh, I don't disagree.
The situation that he's referring to, I sat through, but I'm kind of limited as to how much, I'm in too many different areas, so I'm kind of like tiptoeing, figuring out where I need to be, and I jump in when I can or when I think I should without trying to be an overbearing on it. So I think if it's directed to the chairman of the boards and committees, I think you'll get a lot more response out of it.
Well, I think it makes sense that once we put some of the revisions into these, into the code of conduct, and then we've all agreed on them as a board saying, you know, this is how we feel that this should be moving forward, I think it would make sense to bring in representation, bring the chairmans in from all of these various boards that we're the appointing authority of and just say, here's the code of conduct. It's your responsibility to get this through to your committee members and make sure that you understand crystal clear where we're at with it.
Could we take it one step further?
Sure.
Put a signature online on this and every, every single person that's on a board or committee reads it, signs it, they accept it, date it, goes in the file, done. So now, if there is an issue with me and you call me in, I'm like, oh, I didn't realize it. Excuse me, Mike, you signed this right down here on August 23rd. And that at least would give you a little more leverage to enforce whatever it is that you want to enforce.
Makes sense. I mean, primarily, I would say bringing the-
Not to make it difficult, but just to get everybody on the same, same page and it's, it's going to help everybody involved.
Well, to bring the, you know, I think that would be a task that we'd put on the chairmans of these boards and committees, is saying, look, you guys all understand the code of conduct, sign and date, bring this back to your board members there to sign and date, get those back to Lisa as soon as possible. And then move from there.
It's not easy to keep some, some people under control, but yeah, on these boards and committees, but like on, on Capitol, somebody tried to start talking again after I gave them the opportunity to talk. I'm like, relax, you already had your chance, let me finish what I'm saying, then I go right back to them, now you want to finish. And that's how you, you need to try to get through these meetings and sometimes it doesn't happen that way.
Well, having somebody put their name to something gives a lot more accountability to, you would hope.
No, I know that. That's why, I think it's important if they sign it and then you actually have something that you can refer back to, that you accepted and you could go one step further as to give them every year on their, or their reappointment date, they re-sign the thing again, you throw away the old one, now you got a new one.
What do you think, Tom?
I think it's all a very good idea. I'm just a little concerned about the amount of work it would take to chase down every volunteer to get this form completed. I wonder if-
Upon their reappointment. It becomes a burden of our office to make sure the paperwork's signed before it gets to you.
But the initial one, if it's this board, they all go to Kevin. Kevin makes sure Tim signs it, Mike signs it, Hal signs it, whatever the mystery, missing person is going to be.
Take the situation of the conservation agent which is appointed by the board of selectmen, but he sort of reports to the conservation committee too, so they have a right, I would assume, to question what he's doing or is that, where does that fit in your analysis?
If you're asking me how, I think you're asking me, I'm going to rephrase your question back to you, is how would we address uncertainty or concerns about the way somebody was doing their job on behalf of a committee that has regulatory authority? And I think the appropriate way for that to happen, and that's a good example, not because of the people involved in Douglas, but just theoretically, because the CONCOM agent in any town that has one is probably not even a department head, might be reporting through somebody else. The members of the CONCOM would ask questions in open session. So you knew about this on such and such a date, but when was the notice violation actually issued? Did you consult with legal counsel before you sent it? You know, questions like that, without any further editorialization, just let the person answer. Based upon the answers you get, if they're not satisfactory, you take that and you go to that person's supervisor in the organization and say, and you can even go into executive session to discuss, well, I don't really think I like these answers.
I just wanted to make sure, so that type of discussion is fine.
Right. But it goes to the supervisor and say, this, so go to the tape, go to the videotape-
If you want to go beyond discussing the issue and-
Because that's going to happen because we don't micromanage a lot of our field inspectors. So if there's a board or committee that oversees a field inspector and they start to have concerns about performance on some level, they have to have a way to go about it. But what they should do is establish facts that somebody in a supervisory position can react to rather than impressions or editorialization.
It's actually addressed in number 10.
Yeah, it should go to the-
Any concerns, any concerns about the staff performance should be made to the executive administrator.
I'm thinking more of a situation where the policy is different than somebody's carry rather than not malfeasance or, you know, something like that, but just interpretation of how you're carrying. It seems to me that the board has the right to give some input back on what it feels.
One last gray area that I think, and this, we may end up having to navigate with legal counsel, are communications outside of a public meeting by a member of a board regarding an issue that is their personal financial interest. So as far as the ethics committee, the commission is concerned, let's say you have a member of a board who has a project, calls the supervisor in town hall to complain about a field inspector's The ethics commission doesn't consider that a violation because, first of all, you have the right to relief from your government, so you have the right to lobby. As I've said, I think that's a red herring. I don't actually think that's a valid argument. You don't have to be a member of the board, you can complain all you want to. But if that board doesn't directly supervise the person being complained of, then as far as the ethics commission's concerned, there's no violation. But common sense would dictate that if you're going to call the town administrator to complain about a field inspector and it's your project and you're sitting on a board that has regulatory authority over that project, when the project's before you, you have to recuse yourself. So you recuse yourself, but then you pick up the phone the very next day and call the town administrator and say, I want that guy fired? I have a pretty big problem with that. That has happened to us. And I scream like a rooster in the talons of a chicken hawk when this happens because it's an extremely uncomfortable position to be in, to have a member of an appointed board calling to complain about someone, quite frankly, doing their job and then calling that person and then threatening them with litigation or threatening their employment. When that happens, my personal view is the person should be removed from the board. Because that's, it's the closest thing to extortion or bribery without actually doing the thing. It's completely unacceptable behavior. It's the exercise of political and other forms of influence and intimidation to get a result that you could not have gotten from the board that you sit on because you don't supervise that person. But it's your case, it's your personal financial interest. Our patience with this kind of thing wears thin because it's, you know, a couple of repeat offenders that even when they're told point blank, listen, I don't think this is an appropriate phone call, I've hung up on one person, actually hung up on two people from one organization because I'm tired of hearing it. It's not my, it's not my call. I don't tell a building official to ignore the law or the zoning official to bend the law. Those are decisions that are made by other people, whether it's the building code board of appeals or the zoning board of appeals, and it's not appropriate to put the onus on me like I'm going to muscle somebody into doing something they're not supposed to do because you sit on a board or you have political influence in town. People's confidence in government stems from the transparency of the way we operate and the defense, whether or not we can defend the decisions we make, that they're made on the merits of the facts that are in front of the decision-making bodies and not being made because, the Rhode Island phrase would be, I know a guy, I know, I'll get this, I'll fix this, I know a guy. You know that thing you don't deserve, it's on its way. You know, those kinds of things, if we can avoid those things, the public's confidence in its local government is much higher than trying to work a game. And Douglas, in my opinion, is outstanding in this regard. You have very clean processes and, but it's not because it just happens organically. There are people in town who defend these things. And I want to be able to know that the people who work in town hall are in that team that are trying to defend the integrity of the processes by not listening to this cajoling or bantering from behind the scenes. I would like to see something about that captured in this. But it still has to steer clear of First Amendment, right? You can't punish people for saying what they want to, it's just they don't have necessarily a right to sit on a board and do it from the perch.
So you're going to put together a new draft and let's-
I'll draft.
I was just going to say that, like, Matt, use a little creative license and bring that back in front of us and we'll discuss it again. Fair to everybody else?
Does it make sense in that right up to specifically outline the expected actions of someone recusing himself or herself from a particular motion or from a particular agenda item, meaning step away from the table, out of the room? Do we have to get that granular?
I think this would be a general situation rather than-
Probably, I agree.
A, B, C, or D.
There's a couple parts to that.
The thing about, so that, that particular situation or that type of situation, there are a couple of things that are supposed to happen. One is disclosure. So the individual with the appearance of a conflict is supposed to recognize that on their own and disclose it because there are opportunities for the board you sit on or your appointing authority to waive the ethics consideration if they have confidence that you can still do your job. If you don't disclose it and then you're in the meeting and you're confronted with the fact that, hey, you may have an interest here, you should recuse yourself, and then you refuse to do so. I don't know, if that's not the definition of a willful violation, I don't know what is. So the question is, what would you do, what would the code of conduct allow a chair to do or the appointing authority to do if you had clear cases of people willfully violating either the Ethics Code or Open Meetings Act?
I think you'd leave it, you know, basically give the chairman the authority to have the person removed from the meeting.
If the person refuses to move, remove themselves from the meeting, the chair, what are they going to do? Call the cop?
If you have to.
Well, I'm just, I know, if it was me, I know what I would do. Meetings and recess, or the meetings closed and we'll see you next month. And then I would take, I'd take it up with-
The appointing authority.
Most likely, I would go see Matt as a chairman, I would go see him and get advice as to how to proceed. But not everybody's going to do that.
No. And I think the other issue that it is, is like, if it's the first agenda item and you've got a stacked agenda, like, case in point, it's one of, like, it's a planning board or it's-
In ZPA, you have, there's multiple things, is you could be, if you got your 100-day, 100-day period and we're, and tonight's meeting is going to be day 80. I can't push it off until next month, but Matt doesn't want to remove himself.
Well, I-
Well, this is, so it comes down to, and it's all hypothetical nonsense at this point, it comes back to enforcing whatever we come up with, it needs to have some enforcement to it.
The biggest kicker is it comes to someone that is willfully refusing to recuse themselves on a clear-cut ethics violation. And if the chairman has called them on it and says, this is an ethics issue, you need to recuse yourself, and they won't, all of these meetings take place here and we have a very able-bodied police department downstairs. If we have to, they come up and escort them out.
Then you, then you need to direct the chairman to do that, if that's what you want and be done because it's going to become a circus event. So I'm just saying, I'm just putting it out there. So you have to make sure that it's very clear what, what you want to happen, that's all.
Yeah, I think I know what situation you're talking about and I think a chairman with the understanding that this-
with the understanding that this board expects all chairs to run a meeting with the proper decorum, knowing that he or she has that backing of us, I think is.
Helpful.
Going to help a lot.
Yep.
Yep.
The, on the recusing portion of it, since you're drafting something up, you may want to consider if you, say, I have to recuse myself 15 times during the course of the year. That's an issue.
If I'm in constant conflict with, with somebody who's zoning because I'm unzoning, if I'm in constant conflict with an applicant that's coming in and I have to keep accusing myself, should I be maintaining that position on the board? This is something to consider.
One of the rare occasions when the Ethics Commission's opinion is very clear, that the repeated need to recuse yourself for many matters is itself an ethics violation. You're basically broadcasting the fact that you have your fingers in virtually everything that comes before that board. They've, they've ruled that that's a violation.
So it might be something we want to consider with this. I think getting everybody on the same, on the same page as far as what the Code of Conduct is supposed to be is going to go a long ways and help propel the boards into a more professional manner.
Do you think you could have something drafted for us for our next meeting, Matt?
Yeah, because we have a, we have an extra Tuesday, so this would be September. I will do that. I will make the note.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, discuss remote meetings in our packet. We have a list of some of the boards that have objected. Or basically rendered an opinion.
Yes.
Sorry. And I'll just kind of go down through them. Chairman from the Library Board of Trustees, prefer remote meetings as long as the state will allow. Compromise would be in-person with the option of remote. The Historic Commission prefers to meet in person, though it's not always possible. Their concerns with the new strains of the virus that are coming about, they're more likely to start doing Zoom meetings for the immediate future. ZBA's next meeting is not for two and a half weeks, so they're not able to discuss with the board until then. The chairman prefers in-person meeting with remote as an option, but only by necessity. Currently, there are two members who do not attend meetings on a regular basis. If remote availability was available to them, perhaps they could change their attendance. Oktoberfest, they have members that prefer to stay remote. Remote for conservation and in-person for planning. If they had to choose, it would be remote. That's Tracy Sharkey for conservation and for planning, but that's just hers. Open Space prefers in-person meetings, and we still haven't heard from Personnel, Recreation, FinCom, Board of Health, or the Building and Facilities Commission. But it seems like most of these boards would like to at least have the option to do remote participation.
I think, given the virus situation, maybe, you know, things could get worse in the fall, and do we want to tie people's hands? Some of the boards or advisory are really, you know, the Oktoberfest, I think, I'm happy to have people participate if they want to do remotely. I don't see how anybody in the town is hurt adversely by giving them a latitude to meet that way.
What I don't like is how the state's kind of tied our hands on it a little bit. It's all or it's none.
Is that right?
Yeah. And that's, that makes it tricky. But I mean, I think it should, that's another one of those things that you go back to what I, no one, our last discussion, leave it at the discretion of the chair. If the chairman of that particular board or committee is okay with remote participation from board members and the state's still willing to allow it, then you let them do It's just a slippery slope, by the way that you look at it.
The all-or-nothing thing makes it difficult. You can see with these philanthropic boards or the boards that are cultural or historical, why drag somebody out in a snowstorm, you know, who might not be the best driver but is still very actively involved? But when you have people's rights, property rights on one side of the fence or the other side of the fence that are being decided by that board, and you're interacting with somebody, I'm sorry, it's pretty much impossible to interact with somebody remotely. It doesn't matter what your platform is, Zoom or Via, WebEx, whatever. And what do you do with, I can imagine maybe six to eight months from now, we finally get this room set up for better meeting facilitation, and we can put plans up on a big screen that's bright and can be shared on the video feed with cable, and you can scroll over to a spot and circle a spot on a plan where everybody can see it, whether they're remote or present physically. But we're not there yet. So somebody.
That's my biggest.
You know, somebody might be looking at really small, 11 by 17 ledger copies of the map circling some tiny microscopic thing.
We have trouble in person, never mind on a screen.
Right. But if, if everybody's here in person, you can all pass it around and say, do you see what I see? Which you can't do when everybody's far flung.
Well, here's the advantage that we have, is that, again, it's one of those things that we don't have to decide on tonight. And there still are multiple other boards that we have not heard back from. And currently, the position that we had is that you can use remote participation for audience members, but the board is required to be there in-person to vote. And I think that's the standing that we have on it.
I think we had, we had said that if it was in a legal counsel or something like that, it could be remote. But I thought, actually, the applicants, if it was on a land use thing, the applicants had to be in-person as well. That's what I, I thought it was. I could be wrong.
You discussed that. I don't know if your motion.
I'd have to go back to June 1st and watch.
I don't think our motion actually covered it, no.
I don't know if your motion covered that.
Right.
That's a policy you can make. So the interpretation is, we're talking about down in the weeds, right? The current footing in Douglas because of the Board of Selectmen's vote is that there is no remote participation by members. That's what the Open Meetings Act addresses. Whether remote participation by any member of the public, including applicants, is allowed or not, is something that you can refine. The way I think you voted is you left it to the discretion of the chairs to determine who could participate remotely and who couldn't, provided that all their voting members.
Are in-person.
Were in-person.
We want to let that sit for now until we hear back from the rest of the boards?
Oh, I don't know. Facility, Building Facility, FinCom.
A suggestion, Mr. Chairman? Maybe we invite some of the chairs to the next select board meeting with Town Council, either remotely or physically present, to advise everyone on due process considerations, you know, meeting considerations, and see what, to make this conversation in the absence of legal counsel, seems like we're missing a voice.
I like that idea. What do you guys think?
I'm an in-person kind of guy for reasons I think we've stated in previous meetings. I'm a little bit leaning, at least temporarily, in Hal's direction. I know there's volunteers in town that are constricting their activities in the community because of the virus. I may push it off a little bit, but I think we want to make a decision sooner rather than later.
I differentiate between the groups that really have no power but are just, you know, writing recommendations or whatever. I mean, I think the, the Oktoberfest is a good example.
I agree.
You know, I don't think we should.
But we can't carve them out, though. It's all or nothing.
Well, you can. You use Kevin's statement about it's up to the discretion of the chairman. So if the chairman of, and I'll use zoning again, if the chairman of zoning says, we all have to be here and the applicant has to be here with the plans or whatever because we don't have any other option. We don't have screen share or whatever. Conservation has Steve, he can sit there and run around with his cursor and make circles and whatever he does, but we don't have that in, we don't have it in planning, we don't have it in zoning. So maybe you leave it to the discretion of the board, and then that would open it up for your Historical and Library Committee and things like that. Is that allowed, Matt?
I think the ZBA, Conservation and Planning are different, different animals.
Right, but because of that all-or-nothing.
Yeah.
Statement.
Maybe that'll.
That's the one bright line thing that we can't change. We do have Rich Bowen's opinion on that, which is it is truly all or nothing. So if you, as a board, wanted to change your policy back to allowing remote participation, it would apply to everyone. Committee, planning board, everyone.
So then the chairman wouldn't have that.
Discretion.
Leverage to turn around and say, Matt, you got to show up. They wouldn't be able to do that because the policy is, I can be remote, you can't tell me what to do.
Is the state considering changes itself?
They're extending.
They extended it to, I'm going to forget now, April, I think.
Chris talks about doing it again.
Because it's such a big, an important vote in zoning, I keep using zoning, but it's such an important thing, you really need that, that information clear so you can make a good decision.
I think Matt's recommendation makes sense, though. I think it would make sense for us to hear from the chairmans of these boards and kind of get a better feel for what's going on with it. I hate that they really painted it to an all-or-nothing, where you can't do a case by case. Because that would just make this so much easier. You know, because to Mike's point, you know, there's technical deficits that prevent them from being able to effectively meet remotely. You know, whereas Oktoberfest, it's not a big deal. You know, hop on a Via Spaces meeting or a Zoom or whatever you want to use and, you know, hash out what you guys are going to do.
All right, so it doesn't look like we're going to take any action tonight. We're going to maybe invite the chairman?
Chairman and council?
Yeah, and Town Council. Either remotely or in-person.
The, that smart board thing that you talked about before, is that any still on the table? Are you still exploring that?
Yeah, so what we've, like, I think I mentioned maybe in my last report, we had priced it out and got it way down to a much more manageable number within the existing budget of the IT department. So I'm going to press forward with it. But I'll have to train everyone on how to use it, and we'll have to work with cable to make sure that it meshes, marries nicely with their systems, that it does what we intended to do.
On our viewpoint, are we doing anything with the Land Use Board yet or just building? On the uploading applications and all that? Is it still?
So the principal.
Because that would help.
We're morphing into my report, so we might as well.
Oh, sorry. All right, all right, forget it, I'll wait.
We'll table that till he gets his report.
Yeah, table that. Table that question.
All right. The next item is approved minutes and possible votes. I'll make a motion to approve the July 20th, 2021, meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Also make a motion to approve and retain the executive session minutes for July 20th, 2021.
So move. A second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on that? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chairman, I'll abstain from that acceptance minutes.
Yes, sir.
Shifting things up and keeping things fresh, I would make a motion that we approve the August 3rd, 2021, meeting minutes.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 To round out the night, I will make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes for the same night, August 3rd, retaining all.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion there? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Your report that Mike preempted you in too early.
I promised Town Council that we'd be in executive session by 8:30, so it gives me like a minute. Staff transitions have been very smooth, so we have new hires filling out the vacancies that have been posted at staff level. So we are at full complement. Julie will be moving over to the Board of Health from the assessors. Meanwhile, she's training her Jen, who's come on, Jen Larson, who's come on to fill her role after she moves over. And we know we have Jen Kuchar established as the Principal Clerk and Planning. The Community Development Director position was, we had a candidate, we did a large group interview, we had a very good interview, an offer was made, and the candidate realized, wow, Douglas is far from my house.
Oh, kidding.
And declined the offer. So we're back to square one.
Doesn't reflect on planning ability.
Well, no, maybe, maybe we dodged a bullet.
He was asked, he was asked that question multiple times, it was ironic, but.
If anybody in the future wants to apply for this position and is watching this meeting to decide whether they want to work here or not, here's a fair warning. If you're going to apply to a municipal government position, drive to and around the town where you're applying to know how far it is from your home and whether or not the community settlement pattern meets your expectations professionally and whether you're going to work in that environment or not. Don't try to do it from your computer, it's not going to work. Just saying. To your point, Selectman Fitzpatrick, the fundamental building block of e-permitting is the form that the person will, the applicant will fill out. And the software company designs the form around the questions you want to ask, and then how you're going to route that through the workflow path. The Principal Clerk's been assigned the task of mapping those out for the Planning Board. We already have a contract with Viewpoint, with the e-permitting contractor for planning, conservation, and zoning. So that's in place and was paid for with CARESAC money. Now we have to pay for the actual software implementation. It's $4,000 a form. So I'm not real, even though it's CARESAC, I'm still not real thrilled with having 15, 16 forms, because if you do the math for 16 forms, that's 64,000 bucks. I don't know that, I think we should pare down the number of forms to those that are used most commonly and which need to be routed to multiple steps so that we can use it as a workflow management tool and not just putting forms up that may never be utilized. But that is in progress. She's been tasked with that, and Eve, the interim Community Development Director, has been tasked with helping with that. So we're back to square one with that recruitment. I think the good thing is Eve has a lot of contacts and is a recruiter on her own and trying to get a replacement in here. So I'm confident that with time, we're going to get this right. As I said to everybody on the interview committee, it's better not to make a hire than to make a bad hire in this, in this particular position. There are a lot of people with a lot of demands on it, and everyone has to be comfortable with the decision in order for the relationships to work, for the mutual respect to exist from the, from the get-go. So I'm disappointed because I thought the candidate was really highly qualified, but.
It was a good process.
It was a good process. So we'll, we'll replicate the process as we go along. This is RFQ season, and this will be the last thing I mention now, actually, two things, I guess. So we're just going to start issuing RFQs for various capital projects. State of emergency's been lifted, therefore your order's been lifted by operation of lifting of the state of emergency. So the first RFQ that'll go out is for design and services for the generator and electrical upgrades here in the municipal center. That's a capital project. The next one will be the roof, and after that, we'll finish up the smaller projects at the municipal center before we get into town meeting prep for November. We'll also be doing audit services and heating fuel for the winter, road salt. November. We'll also be doing audit services and heating fuel for the winter. Road salt is already out. We're back on the Shrewsbury contract, so whatever Shrewsbury negotiates with 20-some-odd other towns, we'll be along with. We have always beaten the DOT price by going that route. Audit services, there is a best practice in Massachusetts that requires an audit committee be founded, and that the audit committee actually picks the auditor for the town. And it's important that the entities that are being audited don't sit on that committee. So, it is a function of the select board and probably those select members of town meeting that serve on FinCom, and not very many other people. Because if you touch a procurement process, or if you touch the spending of any money, you're being audited by the auditors. So, you don't get to pick your boss when it, when it comes to audits. I think it's time.
Can you designate the finance committee as the?
You could. You could. The legislative branch typically would audit the executive branch. That would, that makes the most sense. But I think the select board, I, I think you have a role to play because there are policies that we need to put in place. And I'd like to see the, whether it's the same auditor renewed or new auditors, the only thing I'm uncertain about is what is my role in this? Because technically, the finance director reports to me. I have to be able to evaluate the performance of that department. If I don't use the audit, if I don't, if I'm not comfortable with who the audit firm is, I'm not sure I have the best possible vehicle to understand the performance of that department. So, I think we should discuss, this is another reason I have Rich Bowen at the next meeting, because we should talk about what is the role of the chief executive, which would be the Board of Selectmen and the administrative officer, that's me, in picking the auditor.
I think you would have a role, whether it was finance or us or whatever, anywhere.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm the awarding authority, but.
Yeah.
You know, it's long overdue. We, we, an auditing relationship should be revisited every five years or six years. Here in Douglas, Heath Malanson or Malanson Heath, whatever you want to call them, they've been here for about 15, 16 years. It's just like the Maya process, right? Have the conversation. If you're comfortable with the incumbent, there's no reason not to renew the incumbent. Just make sure you know why you're comfortable with them, with what value they're adding. They have had multiple senior management turnovers, so we have not had the same audit team. We've had different personnel every year.
Right.
So, that keeps it fresh technically. But, as you know, I don't think some of the fiscal controls, especially around things like inventory management accountability, asset management and accountability, are in place. That responsibility does fall to management. It falls to Gene and I particularly. But when we ask for help, we're supposed to get it. And the last time we asked Malanson to, to look at inventory in particular as a fiscal control.
It didn't go well.
It was, you know, hear no evil, see no evil, speak no evil. It's like, come on, that is not the proper response from an auditing firm. They should jump at the chance to say, a best practice would be to do X. And then, so that management can implement X. So, that's kind of where we are with that.
I would serve on that committee if.
It's a very important.
It's the will of this board. That one, I will show up to.
I was gonna say, you're gonna be pretty straight out with the CMPC.
Yeah, yeah, CMRPC, it'd be pretty rough.
Right?
Two other things quick. We are, I had promised the staff here that we were going to look into the way the compensation tables are established. So, I'm interviewing every single member of the staff individually. So, I'm doing a couple of times a week, three or four appointments, and it takes up pretty much the whole morning, to get feedback one-on-one with each staff member on what it's like to work here, what they like, what they don't like, what they like, don't like about the compensation table. The last thing is, we got through the tropical storm slash hurricane fairly well. The crazy thing decided to take a westward 90-degree turn that wasn't predicted by most of the models. It was predicted in the earlier models, but not the ones right before the storm. It was supposed to go straight. Needless to say, I think we handled it properly. We did put out code red message when it was a tropical storm, actually a flood watch, because we've had problems with stormwater in town, and we wanted to remind people of the importance of being prepared for trees going down, holes going down.
Water.
Unlike a, a, of other communities, though, we didn't follow that up. We didn't, so when it was upgraded to a tropical storm warning, we went through Facebook and not using code red. We want to reserve our emergency messaging system for things that are actually specific to Douglas that are a threat to people. So, if their streets closed, if there's water washing out covert and the whole area is impassable, we have to make sure our dispatchers and our first responders are, are aware of it, and then the residents in the immediate area are aware of it. Another example would be, didn't affect us, but the day after the storm, when the storm turned around, came back eastward, there was a tornado warning for the Clinton area and then north towards Ashburnham later in the day. We have the ability to take a map, plug it into code red, and only send a message to the people who are in the zone of the warning. We would do that. That's, that's obviously an appropriate use of code red. But we're not just gonna do general messaging to make ourselves feel better. Most people are plugged in, either through their phone or their TV, to the weather, and they can see what's going on, make their own decisions.
If you overuse it, you become desensitized to it.
That's just it. It's, it's for emergency purposes. When people see code red, you want them to listen because it's, it's definitely gonna affect them.
I know when we got code red, there was a push to get people to download it. I wonder what we, more, we can do to keep that.
So, I can see the response rate right down to the very last number. Quite a few people listened. So, about 67% of the database got the message when we sent it. So, for triple E, it was more like 30% people listened.
I think the bigger thing is, is to look through code red, make sure that there's a means that we can just keep the people that are responsible for it in it and familiar with the interface and, you know, run like monthly tests on it. Like, build a small test group.
Yeah, so, there's, there's been a volunteer from Churchill to be part of the test group so that.
Yeah.
All six people with launch codes could repeatedly practice and send messages to Churchill. I think we can include parts of southwest Maine while we're at it.
I can just drill through the bushes to Bruce next door. I mean.
All right, that's my report. I don't want to keep Rich waiting too late. That's when I'm done.
What are your motions?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we move to executive session for the purposes of litigation with Rich Bowen and to leave executive session for the purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Sounds pretty good to me.
All right, can I have a roll call vote?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bowen, aye.
Morris, aye.
Davis, aye.